Good evening, everybody. It is five o'clock. We'll call the May Board Meeting to order. Thank you for being here. Got a lot of visitors. It's gonna be an exciting night tonight for us. I would ask you to take a look at the agenda of board members. Now, first of all, I should say, Ms. Collins said he was gonna be out tonight, so we'll note that in a minute. Otherwise, if you would like to take a look over the agenda and any additions that need to be made, I think Mr. Collins can.
And I think that they've all been added now. Is that right, Ms. Sam?
Oh, yes, sir.
So some of this, if you've looked at the agenda earlier, there's a few changes, and some of it, we have added those.
All in favor of the motion that we approve the agenda for the line?
Sound move.
Okay, a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thank you for that. If you'd stand for pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all. Thank you. Okay, board members in the... We had two emails of importance, one on the 27th and then one today, that have all the attachments that you'll need. The first attachment we'll look at is the meeting minutes, draft minutes from the April 4th Board Meeting. If you've had a chance to look at those, if not, you can take a moment. Board will be open for a motion that we approve those subject to any changes.
I have a motion to approve April.
Thank you. Got a motion? And a second? Any questions or changes that need to be made to this? None of all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great, thank you for that. We also had, in the email today, the dispersments for the month of April. You want to look through those? Or maybe you already have already? And would like to make a motion? Or ask any questions?
Is that who we ordered from? Is that our supplier?
Orders, yes.
Orders, yes. We ordered them weekly?
Um, yeah.
And I had a question about the FEMA cash dispersments. Those are just the dispersments. There's no, we have not received yet from any reimbursements yet of the 75%.
Right. And it should be in a day, because it's not a nine-day wait. So it should be in a day.
Yeah.
I checked about a week ago. And it's actually more common to see it happening and then they would notice their pound. Stacy has been awarded to.
Ah, okay.
They know the little things.
Okay, okay, interesting. That's fine, long as the money gets you.
That's fine.
That's super.
Huh?
Do I hear a motion to approve the dispersment?
Sound move.
Okay, no question. Thank you. Second, any other questions or comments or... Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We do have our principals here this evening, so would you like to talk to us?
Sure. I don't have anyone here. My first choice, a student, was out of town. She went out of town. And my second choice, her grandmother, passed away. So I was gonna grab one off the street, but, you know, Amber Alert and all that is like illegal. So I thought that it's fitting for me to stay here as the student and the leader of the school, 'cause it takes, quickly found out, it takes a village to raise a child, and it takes a village to raise a principal. And I am grateful, humbled. This is the end of my first year, and I am excited. I have to thank Ms. Jean and Mr. McCormick for embracing me and helping me. And tell you a quick story. When I was going in for my leadership endorsement, the very first night, I was accepted into a cohort, and we did it in Mr. Hopkins', his system. And contrary to what some people believe, I don't even think he knows this, that they thought we knew each other. But he was superintendent in the next county. But anyway, the first night, we were in class, he comes through. And so I was the only one that wasn't from the county. And I was like, who is this man interrupting my learning? I'm about to be a principal. You know, and they're like, hey, Mr. Hopkins.
But it's my village, so.
Right. It's like, who's this man? So he left, he said his hellos and goodbyes, and he went on. And I didn't know that many years later, he would give me my first job as principal. And so I am beyond grateful. And I've learned two things really since I've been, well, a lot of things since I've been here in Fayetteville, but two that stick out. You cannot eat all the sundrop cakes and weigh the same amount as when you got here. And you are always, always, every minute of your life on interview, because I did not work for him, but I worked for two of his best friends. And so you never know where, yeah, where your next lesson is gonna come from. So I thank you guys.
And did you say out loud that Tiger Tracks is Friday? And how many t-shirts do you see told me?
Seven hundred.
That's a lot of shirts.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Rain or shine. Rain or shine. It takes a lot to raise a principal. Tiger Tracks, oh, nah. PTO's not doing it, don't worry about it. So thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Hi, I have Nikia Cannon. She has asked her softball coach to come with her. So I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor, this was kind of last minute. Ms. Taylor said I'll be happy to come with her. She also has her parents here, but I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor introduce Nikia, 'cause I think that's appropriate, that she wanted her to be here with her. And Ms. Taylor was worried about her wearing those jeans.
Oh, I was worried.
This is last minute, so there you go.
Just one pair.
I didn't even like to get one in school. Okay, so Nikia is one of my eighth grade softball players. She's played on the team for two years. She's been a standout athlete since she started playing softball. She's had four total home runs this year, and she's adding an amazing presence behind the plate as our catcher. She's been amazing. She was also voted by other coaches as an all-conference player in our season, and it's Saturday, so she got that award on Saturday. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
All right.
Hi, I'm Nikia Cannon, and I am in the eighth grade. We have two very important events scheduled for this week. Wednesday and Thursday night, starting at 6:30, our drama club will be performing Robin Hood and His Merry Men. On Thursday morning, fourth graders from Ralph Askins will come over to watch the play, meet some of the eighth graders, and to tour our school. I have tickets for each of you if you would like to attend. Saturday is an event I'm also excited about, eighth grade night. The walkout will begin at 6 o'clock in the FMS gymnasium. The eighth graders will stay after the walkout for dinner and a dance. One other big event we have planned is Tiger Breakout. This is scheduled for Monday, May 16. We plan to begin our day with a pep rally, and then we will walk to Don Davidson Park for a fun day of games and activities. As I leave FMS, there are a few things I would miss. I would miss seeing the teachers and some of the younger students in the building and at our games. But I look forward to playing and meeting new people on the softball team next year. I have tickets for each of you if you would like to attend the play.
Can I may you? And one thing we do is we always, if we ask you to introduce your guests, so you have some guests, I see, back there. So who do you, who do you have with you?
I brought my mom, Shakia Hall, my dad, Renato Cannon, my coach, Taylor Adams, my sister, Taylor Cannon, and my teammate, Ovi Ajic.
All right, good. We're glad to have y'all. We're very proud of her. Thank you for letting her be in our school system.
Thank you.
For her home runs, that's pretty good.
That is, for anybody, especially an eighth grader. And thank you for the tickets, too.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McCormick?
All right, I have Demarion Curry with us tonight. I asked him to come because I believe he epitomizes what we hope for all of our students. But also, I'm his Tennessee Achieves mentor this time, and I, full disclosure, had kind of forgotten about the May Board Meeting 'cause we've got so much going on. So, you know, I'm helping him, he's helping me. We're gonna call it even.
That's a good line, isn't it?
And so he's got some things he's gonna tell. Of course, you know, our last few weeks are super busy. So he's gonna go through all that, and then I think he's gonna tell a little bit about his points.
We had EOC testing has been completed, and a huge shout out to Ms. Wright and Mr. Giffen and all the teachers for their hard work. We had a few glitches on Monday, as expected, but after that, things went very smooth. We're currently in the process of finishing up state dual credit and AP testing. With addition of AP access for all, we will have students taking several tests, possibly earning credits over a wide variety of topics. Participation has been good this week, and we look to expand for next year with more offerings. May 10th at 6:00 p.m., we will hold our senior awards ceremony as we celebrate all our senior accomplishments one last time before graduation. May 13th at 7:00 p.m., we will hold graduation on Tiger Field, weather permitted. We hope you will all be able to attend. We have a track seating reserved for central office, school board, and their spouses. Since it is a more formal event, we will not be allowing lawn chair seating on the track. May 17th at 5:00 p.m., we'll have our Beta Club induction in the FHS gym for our rising students. May 10th will be our year-out closed field day for student council. Administration will be cooking hamburgers for the students, and each of you are more than welcome to swing by and grab lunch around 12:00. So I did dual enrollment through the school at TCAT for a couple, the last semester. And it was nice, but it's more for like people with hands-on. So I had the last-minute decision, thanks to Mr. McCormick. I talked to a couple of teachers, and I decided to further my education in teaching and coaching at Montlo and Tennessee Southernness for my last year.
We were proud of you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good job.
Look forward to maybe having a spot one day. Like I said, hate.
Don't forget about me.
There you go. Hey, that's a good plug.
So remind me the day of the outdoor activity to wrap up the school year?
Oh, May 18th.
Eighteenth.
That's the day we're cooking hamburgers?
That's the day I'm cooking, yes.
I kind of missed that day.
Oh, it's gonna be nice now that we got the grid. A lot of the flu with that death trap of a charcoal grill.
Right about that.
Good. Thank y'all.
Our eighth graders will go over that afternoon.
Yeah, eighth graders come over that afternoon. Kind of work on transition and do it. Yep.
Good, any other comments or questions?
Can I have a moment of true confession and apology? I'm gonna miss graduation. This is breaking my heart. But Sarah graduated last year. Because of COVID, we had to postpone her senior trip. And when we were scheduling it this year, we were trying to do it as early as possible. She came home today from college after her freshman year, and we're going to, as quick as we can, we're going out of town. And actually, it's already scheduled. So we're gonna be out of town at night through the 16th. And I am so sorry.
We certainly understand, and I'm just hoping for great weather, 'cause if I have to move that thing in the gym, y'all pray for it.
I agree. It'll be, it'll be fine. Pretty soon you'll have a nice new color Tiger Coliseum.
I know. I'm just, I'm imagining having like 1,500 seats and never have to worry about an outdoor graduation again.
It feels like this.
Yeah. I just need a, need a man to write a check for a stage.
Yeah.
We'll work on that.
But thank you.
Appreciate those reports. Ms. Williams? Say y'all.
Okay, first item is the One American Life Insurance Policy, which we currently are with USAV. In fact, in October, we're going to do American Fidelity, and that means our life insurance policy will change. But we're also, we'd like to increase our policy to 12,000 benefit per employee. And so I would just ask for your approval to increase, to approve the policy with the increase, which will, is currently, we're at 4,168.80, and it will go to 4,446.22. This is an annual amount, which the difference is $277.92. And this is an increase of $2,000 benefit amount per employee. So it's just addition to.
I was gonna say, great benefit for employees for no more than, what'd you say, 40?
Two hundred something dollars more. Forty-four hundred total, forty-four, forty-six.
So.
It's just increased to 277.92. So I would just ask for your approval.
Okay.
Second, for you tonight, motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion? And a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And then we'll come back to a few other financial matters in a moment.
Okay.
I suppose. Committee reports, facilities and transportation. I guess we have, you want to?
I'll get this one. We just need to decommission a bus. It's no longer, we're not able to use it due to the regulations that Tennessee has. So you have to vote to do that. Then we'll look either to auction it off, sell it, or we may do some swapping around with the places. RCA is very interested in it. And obviously, they don't have the rules and regs that we do as a public school. So, you know, we'd obviously rather help them out and sell it to them as to just auction.
First motion to approve decommission bus, zero three.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
And I want to make note that we did buy, we're buying a new bus with ESRA money, and then we're buying a second bus with some of our budget money. Is that right?
We had discussed the current year, but we had to.
Okay. So we already need one more bus to replace this one anyway.
And the way that works, the numbering system, that is literally a 2003 purchase, right? Is that '03? Usually, that's the year of the purchase. So that's likely a 19-year-old bus. If you look at the bus numbers that we have, typically, that's what that means. So it's served well if it's, if it's lasted that long.
But I would say, people get great deals getting buses from us because of the low mileage, just the times. So Paul, we don't have to do the miles, but the age gets a certain, we keep a bus long enough.
Yeah. And then under finance, we have the general education budget.
Okay, so I think today you received a new revised budget. Friday afternoon, around 3:00 o'clock, we received notification of our BEP funding for next year, which has been reduced to $318,000. So we felt like that we needed to bring this to the board to have a revised budget that was presented.
At the work session and also, and the one that was presented to the finance committee, because that is, you know, it's a change. We could have approved the one we already had and then went back and did a vision, but since we already knew it, we thought we could. Or should it that way? She has a call-in to Ms. Mary Ann.
Ms. Mary Ann Durski, she's the Finance Director with the State of Tennessee to verify these changes because of the ADM attendance has been reduced from fiscal year '21 to '22. So that's taken effect in FY '23 for us. So instead of the 8 million and $10,000 that we thought we was gonna receive, it is going down to 7 million, 692,000. So that was a difference of 318,000. So on your budget summary sheet, where you thought there was a deficit of 633,724, that now goes to...
No.
966.
Yes, that is correct. 966, 821. This does, the budget does have a 2% increase for all employees. And so that was the drastic change from our work session. And then from the April 27th email, we're saying it's in the general budget.
So it's just a cut in BEP?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So obviously, the TESA being approved, just waiting on the Governor's sour signature. If everything stays the same, it should be no problem, you know, for next year. But we're still in the process of, you know, some reductions of units.
So there was additional budget summary sheet that had like a general fund, the cash on hand, and the total amount of CDs. And so that was an updated document that was sent out today.
Is the, I can't remember the answer to this question, sorry. On our 2023 budget for regular instructional, which is our largest, I mean, obviously, our, you know, 6215, is that projected with the units we had already planned?
Some, but not all.
So what is that more, do you have a more accurate number of what that total number is, what's it projected?
I'll have a more accurate number after tomorrow, but the true accurate number will not happen until, really, till August, because we'll have some just natural.
Right.
You know. We can't account for.
We don't know how much drastically that's gonna.
That's correct.
You're expecting a little, a lot?
I'm expecting probably a lot. That'll, that'll, should be a lot better. But you can't guarantee that, you know.
The TESA doesn't take, in effect, FY '24.
Right.
So that was not good news of the day, was it? But life goes on, and it's a budget. It's a planning document. It's not an actual expenditure document.
That is correct.
It's just something we work to.
And we were very good in last year, even though we obviously didn't spend all the budget we had last year either. So we won't do that this year, so that would help out. The other part is, you know, we do have the reserve and that kind of stuff. So it's, we're not a problem. We just don't have to do that if we don't have to.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else to present there? Or are you ready for us to entertain a motion to approve the general education budget?
Ready to entertain a motion, unless y'all have additional questions.
All right, I'm all ears.
Vote to approve the general education budget.
Thank you. Got a motion?
Say so.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you.
Lisa, capital, the rest of.
Okay, is cafeteria budget, is that the next?
No, next is capital. I can handle that one. Anyway, that's just the approval of the capital budget. Y'all have had that sent to us. There's no change in the capital budget at all. Other than what we.
That's, that's correct. That is, and then attached is the listing of the itemized budget that we were planning on, that we're projecting to spend the funds on. And then it also includes the FEMA project.
Make a motion to approve the capital project budget.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, thanks. And then now we're to the cafeteria budget. And these are all obviously for FY '23.
That's right. And so the cafeteria budget is a little bit of a decrease from last fiscal year. We're request, we're asking for 910,677 to be approved for the cafeteria budget for FY '23.
Do want to make note that we've had verbal approval that all our lunches will be free next year. That's only a verbal, but it, so it's not in writing yet, but that would be, that's huge, especially when a lot of our neighboring systems here did not get that. But due to our free reduced percentage, which is a great benefit to all parents. It doesn't matter what you can have.
So will that come off that total? Or that is what we're projecting to spend even with?
This is what we're projecting to spend.
Just on the meals.
Just on the meals. So the largest cost is our meals, which is $401,66. And then our USDA reimbursement costs. If you look in the revenues, that's how much we're projecting to get reimbursed for, for lunch, commodities, and breakfast.
Obviously, we can make some money if we sold, but we want to, especially with kids, you know, so that helps us out. And we would have to look to increase lunch prices if we were gonna do it, make sure no one wants that.
Make a motion to approve the cafeteria budget.
All right, thank you. Motion and a second? Any further discussion about the FY '23 cafeteria budget? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. And then we have a few sort of housekeeping on the current budget, right?
Yeah, they're just housekeeping, just cleaning up the end of the fiscal year with just some line budgets. So the first one is the general education. It's just transferring funds within the GP budget just for the, any overruns that we have in the line homes.
Yeah. This one has to do with $6,520. We're just moving by month lines.
Just moving from one to the other, just to do some housekeeping.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve line item amendment two for general education fund.
Thank you.
And then the next one is the same.
Hang on, we still gotta.
Same, sorry.
That's good. I gotta say.
That's a funny. You should know earlier now, you're just taking off.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Then line item amendment number two for cafeteria.
Cafeteria is the same thing, just doing housekeeping.
Right, 7,900 moving from line, month lines in the budget, in the existing budget. No new revenues or expenditure.
Motion to approve line item two cafeteria fund.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. All right.
And the next item is the FY '22 budget amendment number two from the general purpose fund. And this is actually moving monies from Board of Education to special education program, the $6,520. Housekeeping item also, it is a budget amendment that we will, that we will ask for your approval. And then we would have to go to the C for their approval.
Okay, make a motion for budget number two, general purpose fund.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
And the next item is for approval of Mr. Hopkins to file necessary amendments and fund transfers for federal projects for FY '22, '23 school year.
Yeah, and just as background, this is a standard thing we do. Y'all, some of you will recall it's just all the housekeeping things that the director may need to do in accordance with the budgets, then we just authorize him to do those on our behalf, so.
I mean, we'll have to, we could meet like once a week.
That's right, we could meet once a week, we're discussing, or we can authorize him to take. Motion and a second, is that what I heard? Um, and that was on this, not the meeting once a week. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? All right. And then a couple of, uh, bills have come in, as they do each month, for the FEMA project, nineteen thousand, three eighty-two, twenty-six. Uh, for the, uh, Broadest and Associates for their project and program management services.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
And voice number six.
Thank you. Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Okay. And then one other, that is for four thousand dollars. There is a peer review required for all the architectural engineering services for one of these projects. And so there's a four thousand dollar cost for another firm to come in and review what, what our architect has, had been doing on this, so. Actually, four thousand dollars seems pretty cheap in, in light of the size of this project, but, but it, it, uh, is that peer review, so request your approval.
Make a motion to approve and voice number thirty-two, four seven.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Okay, any other budget? May is a, a popular budget. It's a busy budget time, isn't it? That's awesome. Okay. Nothing else, and nothing I see in insurance and policies, so, uh, Mr. Hopkins.
I'd like approval for, uh, a overnight trip for FFA to attend the state FFA camp, July the eighteenth through the twenty-second in Camp Clements in Doyle, Tennessee.
Is that moved? Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no?
Uh, approval of an overnight trip for cheerleaders to attend the cheer camp, uh, in, I mean, July the sixteenth to the eighteenth in Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Got a motion? And a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Okay.
And, uh, approval for an overnight trip for GIRA Youth Summit on June the sixth through the eighth at Austin P State University in Clarksville.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? All right, thank you. Um, anything else?
Uh, well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna say that we have nominated as a system here Jade Wick for the TSBA Volunteer of the Year Award, uh, which, you know, we nominated some last year, I think it was, uh, Tim, one of the local, Mark. And then, uh, then Isabella Martin for the TSBA Student Recognition Award. The district winners will be recognized at the fall district meeting, and state winners will be announced at the annual con, uh, convention. I think we've got two good candidates and we've got great chances, again, to win. This week is, uh, teacher appreciation week nationwide, so if you see a teacher, make sure you say something to them, and email, uh, card, whatever you like to do. And I'm gonna, housekeeping, there will be a board photo taken, uh, at nine AM during tiger, I'm sorry. There will be a board photo taken.
Well, right side.
Jim Frank, go.
Uh, there will be a board photo taken prior to Friday's four PM work session. We'll meet in the hall of purpose room. Casey, we would really like for you to be able to attend that.
What's the date again?
It's, uh, gonna be.
It is Friday.
Friday, four PM.
I can make it.
All right, good. And so that, we'll, we'll be in here, so we'll have that.
All right, well, uh, Mr. Hopkins brought up teacher appreciation, and we have a resolution for your consideration tonight, um, to honor our teachers who nurture students, engage them in activities that'll educate and graduate tomorrow's citizens and leaders. And whereas teachers spend countless hours, that's another statement, uh, preparing teaching materials, grading papers and projects, studying about issues in education, consulting with administration, parents, teachers and students and fellow educators. Whereas teachers create a safe and healthy learning environment for students to enjoy while they participate in daily lessons. Whereas our best teachers demonstrate an exemplary attitude and establish rapport with the students. And whereas great teachers transmit their passion for learning to their students. And whereas effective teachers give positive and constructive advice, praise accomplishments, and adjust their teaching styles as needed to meet individual needs of their students. Now therefore be it resolved that the favorable board of education recognizes the numerous contributions that our teachers make every day by establishing May fifth, twenty-twenty-two as teacher appreciation day in all favorable city, city schools. Be it further resolved that the board expresses appreciation and thanks to teachers in our school system and encourages each school and community to recognize them for their contribution to the success of our school system and its students. And that is for your consideration this evening. Could hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution for teacher appreciation week.
All right.
That'll make it.
Thank you. And I have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no?
Also, I, I did send an e, uh, an email on behalf of the school board and myself today, thanking teachers and telling them I appreciate it. I'll send y'all a copy of it, but I wanted to get it out before three o'clock today, so I did send it out to all three staffs.
All right. And the last thing on our agenda, I'm gonna go around and find it, I don't know. We're gonna get, we're gonna get pictures on, uh, Friday, so we can wait on that, but, uh, Mr. Seals, if you would join me, I would appreciate it. Uh, two things we'd like to present to you. It's, it's a, it's an exciting night, but it's a little sad because this will be your last regular board meeting with us officially. Uh, we just wanna thank you for your service. We've talked about this on the board many times, uh, creating a student position, ex officio position, to join us and, and, you know, just be aware of the issues, bring things to the board, um, and you've just done a stellar job with that. You are not sh, you're, you're, um, very proactive when it comes to suggesting, asking questions that, uh, really bring us student perspective, and that's, that's why you're here, and so we just wanna thank you for what you've done. Uh, do you wanna say anything to the board? Knowing you, you probably have a few comments. The kind of leader you are, you probably have something you'd like to say.
I'm honored just to be able to serve, especially represent my class and really the whole school, and I'm just, I'm glad to be given the opportunity, and it's been a, it's been an eye-opener to me, um, getting to see a different part of the public school system, especially our school system, that I never knew about and never even thought about, and, uh, I just thank y'all for all taking me in with open arms and, uh, and just giving me the opportunity to make the best of it, and it's been a real, uh, blessing and pleasure for me to serve on the board.
Yeah.
Well, you have represented favorable city schools very well, and I think the students should be proud. Uh, we're learning, thank you, you're the very first, you can always say no matter what. I want to say to your parents, uh, one of the greatest things I think people can say is what they say kind of sometimes behind your back. And I was at, uh, the pancake break, breakfast Saturday, and, you know, Casey was there, and Casey leaves, and so when he leaves, all these people are talking, and they, they're not, they're not talking to me, I hear them talking up there about what a great young man he is and all those things, so. You did a great job. My only thing is, could you write a book, you know, make them happy? You know, 'cause apparently y'all did a great job, but thank you for allowing us and lending him to us. You know, it, that means a lot to us, as parents here, as we all are, we know what it means, and so, thank you. Thank you, buddy. No, I love you and I appreciate you, so.
Well, I know you already have plans for college and you have a cur, uh, that ahead, so you don't need this for your college application, but you can use this on your resume. You were the first ever student representative, uh, and board member here, ex officio board member to our, our school system. And, um, I, it feels like you should present like this, but we're not really. I would present you with a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
For, uh, for your service on our, on our school board, and just a, a little token of our appreciation, so, uh, again, thank you, you just couldn't have done a better job. We've, you've really set a great standard.
I want you to open it up so everybody can see what we got you. It's kinda like, it, it, it's kinda like, you know, when, uh, my children open up gifts at Christmas, that way, I can see what my, what I bought. It's my, I bought it, I'm like, oh, I'm glad I got you that.
My mama did, though, we get some goodies for y'all together, so y'all can use them in the ivory. Um, during the year.
I had a party to take it.
That's good.
Thank y'all. That's, that's cool. Thank y'all. I'll definitely use this for it.
Hey, and we got to leave.
Thank y'all. Yeah, that's cool. Thank y'all. I'll definitely take this with me everywhere. It's been an honor to serve with y'all. A hundred and so much from y'all.
Very good, man.
Well, the goal is for one day you to come back, bring, you bring the family back, now that in years to come, and, uh, you run the school board and you get to serve.
Rumpf, say the hour.
There you go. That's right. Very good.
Wait a minute. You gotta keep it on the same thing. Who, who's your guest that you?
Oh, that's Ryan.
Uh, this is my dad, Ron Seals and my mom, Mary Best Seals. So, thank you.
Yeah, if you think I'm consistent, I'll make sure.
Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you so much, yes. Casey, I'm watching.
We're, we're very thankful you're here to be able to do this.
Yes.
After your recent accident, uh, so.
Thank y'all for all the prayers.
Lot of prayers.
My nose, sir.
Yeah, Miss Bridget sent me a text earlier that morning, and I was like.
What?
I think he's the first person to tell me.
I'm not sure. What, what?
Everybody's.
It, what is it? Is it like popcorn?
Your dad will tell you this when I say something, you just take it right now.
Go with it.
Just go with it.
Just go. And when I say thank, when we say thank you, it's.
And you've not learned from your father, have you?
Matty will peek, and she'll be like, okay, Dad, what, what did I get?
Oh, wow. I said, no, this little car, little pad, all those things, I can see that on.
I hope y'all like it, I had a lot of thought.
Well, you're, we want to actually name a successor in your seat for, uh, we'll probably do that right in time for the August meeting or something, so. If you happen to be around and you wanna come, uh, need a place to hang out on the, the board meeting evenings, you're, you're still welcome. But we wanted to make sure officially, uh, end the school year, uh, on this note, so you're, you're kind of, uh, off the hook now. It would be just totally extracurricular, but you're, you're always welcome to come back.
Thank y'all.
You want you to disappear on us before we got a chance.
That's right, that's right. So, um, board member says, Mr. Hopkins said, we do have a work session four o'clock Friday. Uh, and we will take a picture first, and then we'll, uh, we'll do the, actually, performance appraisal for you for Mr. Hopkins, so. Uh, I assume you, everybody got the, his inputs, uh, his responses to each of the criteria, and you've had a chance to, if you haven't done so, have it all scored and ready, just, you'll just bring hard copies, and we'll just kind of shout out scores during a, in a controlled, disciplined manner. We'll, we'll take all, we'll get all the scores in during the work session.
They said if it takes a long time, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure enough for the next event.
And then we'll, um, uh, that, that's really the business for that work session, so. Um, and then our next board meeting is, uh, officially will be six June. Is that correct by the way y'all see the calendars? I do the six, is that, is that gonna work for everybody? Okay. Mr. Bryant? Anything, anything from the city's perspective? I know it's been a busy bunch of time for y'all as well.
There's a few things I can ask for the information on, um. First, I want to congratulate Seals, we walked out and I always tell him, tell his family hello. It was cool, that bunch of Seals is back in plan for some.
That's awesome.
I don't know if y'all claim Jimmy or not, but I, I guess you do. Anyway, I went, me and Jimmy went to the machine shop together down here, but, uh, I've enjoyed being around. He's gr, he's a great young man, no doubt about it. Hopefully he can move back to the area, hopefully, you know, some, some do, some don't. We'd rather have him as a city, as a city owner.
They're all fighting him.
But anyway, that's, uh, either here or there. We, um, we did finish our budget up, uh, we did not vote it on, of course, but we voted on it in June. There had been some, uh, we was presented, the board was presented with, um, what the administration was kind of asking for, or what they was not asking for. And one of the things that they did not recommend, the administration was any increase to school system this year, we, we didn't like that. We, uh, we, we intend on raising, uh, three percent, so we intend on doing it. I had heard maybe it'd been a five percent ask for, uh, but we're only having a three percent salary increase for employees. So that goes together pretty good.
Sure.
It was recommended we not have a salary increase in, in employees this year. The board didn't like that either. So we asked the administration to go back and do some different on their numbers, and we gave them some recommendations and some things to kind of look at. Questioned pretty hard, put them in kind of a bad position, but they did it. So, if nothing goes wrong, and it shouldn't, you know, all we like is a public hearing, and it won't change anything. So the school system as a whole should be given a three percent increase over last year, which has worried employees to get three percent cost of living raised. Cost of living is eight percent, we're doing three percent, so still behind. That's what, that's where we at.
That's right.
Another thing is William D. Jones Boulevard project, Mark asked, right here in this room, to me about twelve years ago, start looking at, uh, doing something about that road over on William D. Jones. We did start, we did start about twelve, fourteen years ago. Ran into all kinds of roadblocks, Jim Herford got into a lot of different issues, he was city attorney to town. But anyway, we had a lot of different battles, but came back and put a plan together four and a half years ago. And we actually voted to, to, uh, repair that road four and a half years ago. We've been battling the state of Tennessee for four and a half years, constant, solid. That should have been about an eighteen-month project, and we've been battling that state of Tennessee because we're using part of state money to fund that road that became available to us. So with doing that, you've gotta jump through all of their hoops, and we've had about ninety thousand hoops to jump through. It's been just a continuous. Every time we thought we had it where it needed to be, they came up with something else. And we think we had it where it needed to be, and all they found a wetland. And it just went on and on. The last word we got, almost the last word, was that everything is good. All we need to do is, uh, appropriate the funding, which is ours, about nine hundred thousand dollars. That's state funding, but that belongs to us, it's ours. We've earned it. And we've been trying to get them to do that for two months, just appropriate the funding. The last word I had was this morning, and the city administrator told us this morning that the state had advised us that they would have everything in position. We could go to bid, uh, probably four to six weeks.
Oh, that's correct.
Uh, well, I don't know, but it's not. We battled this thing with Dorothy and I, and it just wore us out, it's our convenience wore us out. If, if they do come through, uh, the city will probably have to put in about another four hundred thousand because the cost has escalated that much during that period of time. And it's, it's the state's fault because they kept putting it off, putting it off. So we'll, we will find the money, we'll find the funding to, to finish it up. I don't want to have a problem with that. So if we can believe what the state is telling us, maybe one time school is out, maybe we'll get this thing kicked off, and it will change that road quite a bit. There's gonna be some elevations, cut down, there's gonna be quite a bit of changes on that road, so. Just to let you know that we've been, we've been told by the state we should be able to get it going in four to six weeks. I don't believe them, but let's hope that you're, let's hope they're back.
I'm the eternal optimist, so I'll believe them for now.
Anyway.
Well, thank you for your fight on that. That's, we've been concerned for y'all, though, y'all who may be new to the board since we started this conversation, it's just thinking of all the buses that, uh, or traffic, period, but especially the school buses going over that, that, that rise especially. It's just no shoulder, no guardrail, very dangerous, it, it's really scary to think about.
We will also be voting, uh, well, in our next board meeting, more likely, it, it goes to the work session, but I've asked, uh, I've asked that we go ahead and temporarily pull that speed limit down to twenty miles an hour from, from, uh, West Washington over to where William Battle intersects.
Right.
That area.
The worst part of it.
Yeah, pull that speed limit down just till we could get into construction and, and get it built, and I guess it'll go back to thirty miles an hour. But I've also asked, the police school that are in force has, people's driving, they're driving too fast in that way. And we probably could have done this quite a while ago, but they kept claiming it was gonna get this thing done, to get this thing done, and not say anything about it because of, of all the problems we had, but hopefully, hopefully, it's gonna finally happen, hopefully.
That's awesome. Thank you for. Thank you for your persistence.
So that's, that's where we at on that. And really, that's all I've got.
Okay. Is that, do you think it's likely you'll have to just close that section of the road?
Oh, they'll have to close it down.
Because it'll be a massive top.
No, they will, they will have to close that road down. They're gonna be doing a lot of cutting, a lot of filling, and they'll have to close that road down. And we won't have it done by the time school opens back up, no doubt. So there'll be some rerouting of some buses. And I've already talked to someone that kind of knows the routing over there, it could be done.
It will work.
It could be, it could be worked out. So other than that, I mean, the lumber company will just have to take their folks around and maybe we'll finally get it done with that area. We would love to pave William Battle right in behind the school. FPU's got us held up on that. They still got, several workers something to do, we don't know. We, we've got burned already by going out and paving and come back and have it all tore up several streets and we're trying to be careful about that. But William Battle is on the, is on the, we're looking at doing that if we can ever get FPU's work out of there. Don Davidson, if you've been down there, they've taken all those poles down. Your poles going up, everything's looking pretty good. So hopefully by next year, we'll have a park that we can use.
Awesome.
Hopefully, so.
That's awesome. Thanks for everything.
And what we're doing with, what we're doing with the LEPAL, all that LEPAL equipment down there, we're gonna have it raised up a lot higher, try to get it above floodline to where when it does flood, it does just knock everything else. Maybe, maybe by this time next year, it'll be looking pretty good. But was it for them?
Sure.
Was it for them? And that's where we're at on anything to do with school where I just kind of heard a little bit. I don't know about this for sure. And I think this, this might be a wish. I think we could use more parking at the soccer complex. Appears that's being used pretty heavy, a lot of parking. I did see to where the Recreation Department, Brian, he must be, I just saw it on your agenda. There's, there's a paved parking lot right across there. Lee Jean said, right across the street. It's paved. And East Michigan trying maybe to get that parking. I don't know if that'll ever go anywhere or not, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of good news. Anything else, board members? If not, we'll stand the jar. Thank you.